Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Rebecca, would you please call the roll?
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Sandy.
Here.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Thank you. The council, we have a special meeting this evening regarding our South Main Street, Highway 1 improvements presentation. I'm going to ask Melanie, our city engineer, to introduce our guests.
All right. So tonight's only item is the presentation. And with the thought being, the next step on this is for the council to submit a resolution of support or some sort of documentation with our preliminary designs, shy patterns preliminary designs, to the DOT. The DOT has the final say in the intersection and the layout, but by showing your support of what we're, what we are submitting helps the cause. So that vote would be at your next council meeting. We've done this as a special meeting so that we can address any questions that you might have on the project that if we can't answer it tonight, we've got a little bit of time to answer it before your final vote. However, Nathan's gonna, he's gonna answer all your questions tonight. So Nathan was shy.
Good luck.
All right. Well, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to be here and help you guys with this project. It's a really exciting project for us. I have an additional member of my team, Justin Campbell, is in the back here. He's one of our roundabout gurus, so I might throw a roundabout question to him or something, but when we get there. We're going to walk you through, first of all, just some overall where the project is, kind of remind you of some of those things, what we looked at, and really what we want to have all of you say, yes, we, we think this is the route we want to go. So first, where are we at? The South Main Street or Highway 1, from Libertyville Road to Fillmore Avenue. It's essentially the section there in yellow is kind of the area we're going to be talking about. So how's this project funded? There is an existing cooperative agreement with the DOT. DOT is going to provide $3.5 million worth of their primary road funds to cover the bulk of the project. That's most of the construction, some of the construction engineering. Other funds, Service Transportation Block Grant, that's federal money that the state administers, that cities like Fairfield get a piece of to do improvements on arterial and better roads. I'm sure you're familiar with it. Transportation Alternative Program, or TAP, that's the trail. The $320,000 is the trail funding. There was a grant that the city was awarded through the local region here. And then there's $140,000 of local money. That's mostly matches, to match some of those other grant funds. So on top of that, we're going to look at some other funds as we move on transportation, or sorry, Traffic Safety Improvement Program through the DOT, TCEP. You can get up to $500,000 per project there. And we're going to brainstorm a little bit with Melanie on some others to make sure we have enough money. Schedule. So tonight, we're going to talk to you about the project, answering your questions. As Melanie mentioned, next week, assuming everything goes fine, there'll be some sort of council resolution or something for you to approve and support. Then we're going to go to the DOT with our concepts. They need to approve a lot of this. They have a lot of this information already in their hands here just recently at District 5. Land acquisition, that should start next spring. So over the winter, the plan is to really nail down some of what we're talking about here, to figure out exactly how much right-of-way we want to buy, how much temporary construction easement, some of those things. Utility relocation in 2021, so that could be power, telecom, some of those other things that are already in that corridor. And then construction in '22. And then, not related to this project, but important, is the DOT plans to overlay Highway 1, do an asphalt overlay from Fillmore up to Burlington in the following year in '23.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
So once this plan is submitted in November, how long does it take the DOT to approve it?
So we're going to submit our concept statement, which is some of our environmental clearances and some of those things that we need to actually go out and buy right-of-way. So that's like a four to six-week turnaround, not a, not a huge deal. We're going to recommend a roundabout here in a few minutes, but if that moves forward, any roundabouts on a state highway, they have a fairly recent policy that a DOT executive committee needs to approve. That's fairly new. Last year at the state legislature, there was a bill introduced to eliminate the use of roundabouts on state highways. It was, ended up, it didn't even get out of committee, but because of that, the DOT is looking at these a little bit closer. Generally, they're in support as long as they're not being forced upon a community or something. So it's kind of what they've told us, but. So I don't, I don't have a good answer on that roundabout approval process, although our schedule has plenty of time.
Well, as I was saying, you said spring land acquisition, so I figured they would approve it by December, January.
Yeah. So part of that is, it's not just for the, like, the roundabout itself. We have to get through a design of how exactly big are some of these storm sewer pipes and how deep are they? So we know how big some of the trenching or whatever it might be. So we're going to show you what we think you need for permanent right-of-way along the roadway, but the temporary easements beyond that are still a little bit unknown. And let's say it impacts a parking lot, well, how do we deal with that? So we've got to work through some of those specific issues with property owners before we can go out and buy all the property. So that's what will happen between now and spring. So today, we want to look at the roadway cross-section. We want to talk about the trail and the sidewalk locations, which side of the road they're on and why. And then look last at Libertyville Road intersection specifically, and I've given you a hint, we're going to recommend a roundabout, but we did look at a traffic signal and we looked at the existing condition, and we'll show you why we're making that recommendation. So we're going to talk about the roadway cross-section first. This is what's out there today. So two-lane, roll section, ditches, gravel on both sides, I'm sure you're all familiar. The existing right-of-way is 66 feet wide, so it's approximately where that blue line is on this picture. The new road is planned to be a three-lane section, so should, and I'll have some more on this, but it'll have two lanes in each direction and a center turn lane, plus trail, sidewalk. We had room for the overhead power, water main. It's going to get wider. So how much, how much wider? So that's what we're going to talk about first here. Things we considered with that are trying to balance, you know, the impacts of properties. We don't want to have a relocation of a property here and avoid something here. One of the good things we considered, this slide kind of shows the top part. The urban section is kind of dashed in the bottom, or in the bottom. The roll section is up above. So today, the water drains into those ditches. Well, in the future, those ditches won't be there. We can't trap water behind the curb. So we've got to get the road likely lowered enough, the water can still drain onto the road, which is one of the hard parts with a roll-to-urban conversion like this. So the bottom graphic there, and we'll come back to this in a little bit. During construction, there's likely going to be an offset vertically between the two as it's being constructed. And one of the things the DOT has asked for as part of the cooperative agreement to provide that funding is that traffic is maintained in both directions throughout. So we'll come back to why that's important in a little bit. So this is just a graphic. This isn't necessarily your project, but, you know, during construction, it could look something like this, where there's some traffic on some new, some traffic on some old, some construction going on adjacent. And the construction could be in the middle, it could be on either side. So this is kind of the roadway cross-section. We're going to walk through, I'm going to be adding dimensions to this as we go, about how we got to where we are today. So this would be essentially your roadway looking north. So trail's on the right or the east, sidewalk's on the left or the west. So where do we start? So I don't know if you can read these or not, and I'm not sure that it's important. If you can, and I'll kind of explain it. The dimension I just added on the bottom, that's 12 feet. That's traveled lane width. 12 foot's pretty standard lane width. It's the DOT preferred width for traveled lanes. We kind of started with that on the outsides for both through lanes. It's actually a foot wider than what I believe you have out there today. I think they're 11-foot lanes today. So the center one, the center lanes are typically between 12 and 14 feet. We've got 12 feet shown here. Something that's this kind of detailed, too, if we were to want to change that in the future, I don't think that changes any sort of recommendation you have on this today, by the way, but we want to explain again how we got to the right-of-way number, which is going to be at the end of this. How much right-of-way do we need to buy on either side? So we went with 12 versus 14 because the volume of traffic here isn't on the high end of a three-lane section, it's kind of on the lower end. And we've heard from city staff and others that sometimes people use that as an acceleration lane. We kind of wanted to discourage that. It's really just a turning lane. And 12-foot is, is adequate for that. And it falls within the acceptable range of the DOT guidance. The next part, so what's the total roadway width? It's 41 feet. So 41 feet is just a hair wider than what's out there today if you include the shoulders. So today, it's about 40 feet from edge of gravel to edge of gravel. There is a little bit of a gutter section on each side, it's shown there, it's two and a half feet. That's to help carry stormwater to the intakes and provide from that 12-foot traveled lane that the, the road isn't right next to it. And I should say, this is all going to be concrete. I've got the middle part shown as black, so it looks like asphalt. But it's all going to be concrete. I've kind of shown that to help separate that gutter section. That's not considered traveled lane, and that'll be important here in a minute when I talk about the power lines. So how's that fit within the existing right-of-way? So existing right-of-way is 66 feet, and our new road, as we're planning it now, is not centered in that existing right-of-way because of that discussion we had a few minutes ago related to the five-foot, or sorry, the vertical elevation difference of the two. If we center that in the right-of-way, it becomes really hard to maintain traffic on just two lanes. So we've shifted that off to the side. So this is kind of what I'm talking about. If the cone there on the bottom was the existing center line, the lane on the right that's new has got to be shifted over to get that built. And I'll show you why we picked the side we did as well. This comes back to that, that shift we're talking about is five feet. This is still in review by the DOT, of course. And honestly, when you're out there, I don't think you would notice it, and we'll have a video here in a minute that kind of shows you if you were to fly through the corridor, what it looks like. But it, it does shift the center line just a little bit. Again, the main reason is just so during construction, the old roads up here, the new roads down here, we have to have some gap between there to get a slope tied in and be able to build it. And that two-and-a-half-foot curb and gutter helps with that, too. We can shift traffic onto that during construction a little bit. So the next piece is the trail. So that pulled up the trail dimensions. Trail's 10 feet. We're proposing that on the west, or sorry, the east. The reason for that is that's where a lot of the retail is, that's where the senior housing is. There was consideration for it to be on the east for a while, I think when it was actually originally awarded. There were some other businesses over there, daycare, it's no longer in operation. And the other part, to put it on the east, is because we have more room. So when we shift that road, the plan is to actually shift it to the west. And the reason to want to shift it to the west is on the left side there, there's that black circle. So that'd be the storm sewer. So one of the first things we need to do to drain this during construction and after is put in a new storm sewer system along the whole corridor. And the plan, and I'll show you in a few minutes where the outlet is, but the plan is that would actually go out the west side of the project near the baseball field. So it would kind of go through the out, just outside of the fence on the baseball field or softball field there, turn and kind of run through the dog park, and there's a drainage area back behind there. So if we, we need to really put that in first, which means we would close the west lane today, put traffic on what is now the northbound, the east side, pave that shoulder that's there today to run two lanes of traffic on the east while we do the storm sewer on the west as well as the first lane. So that's why it moved west. So because it moved west, it makes sense to put the trail that's wider, probably gets more traffic with pedestrians and bicyclists through the corridor on the east, to give it that larger offset. This is kind of the other side of what is left over. So one of the big considerations here, that trail, because it's a pedestrian trail, it needs to have some clearance. So we needed two feet on either side. So we got two feet on the outside, actually showing three on the inside to the power poles. And that power pole is essentially an immovable object, if somebody hits that, it's not going to move. These are big transmission poles, some of them. So we need to keep that 10 feet from that traveled edge of the roadway. So that helped set some of those dimensions. And some of those, they could grow. I mentioned there's three-foot clearance from the trail to the power lines. That could shrink a little bit, but we wouldn't want to go less than two. And the power, to relocate that, we have to work with Alliant to do that. They haven't seen this, we'll talk to them about it. They're going to be impacted regardless, so we're hoping that we can get them to kind of go in that corridor that we've left for them. So what's that mean for right-of-way, which is really the point I wanted to get to here? So the proposal is to take that right-of-way that was 66 feet and widen it seven feet on both sides. So every property on the east side and the west side would have a seven-foot permanent right-of-way acquisition to create an 80-foot wide right-of-way in total. We shifted the road a little bit west, so there's more property on the east than the west from back of curb to right-of-way. So the center of the road would be 45 feet from the east side, 35 from the west side. But the property rights that are taken from both sides or purchased from both sides are actually the same. So that was one of the things that, we wouldn't necessarily have to do that, but to create some sort of equity, we have commercial on one side, residential on the other. If we could accommodate that, that was something we tried to do, and it, it worked out pretty good with the storm sewer being on the west, the trail going on the east, and so those offsets that I talked about. Oh, and then there's the last piece is 40 either way from the existing center line. So are there any questions on that?
How does that trail that you're proposing on the east side of the road tie into the existing trail?
So I'll have some more on that. It will tie into the existing loop trail right at the proposed intersection, and I've got some of that in here. We met with the Jefferson County Trails Committee and talked to them about the safety of that, and I think there'll be more conversations with them in the future, but they seemed supportive of that location and the intersection.
It looked like it was concrete. Is that going to be concrete trail?
The trail? Yep. We're planning for that to be concrete. In fact, I think it'll all be concrete. There'll be some asphalt on the project in a temporary sense, so I mentioned that when the west side is under construction at the beginning, all the traffic will have to be on the east, which means that existing gravel shoulder will be removed and paved before anything begins, so we can put traffic on that, and then it would come back out later. There may be some asphalt for temporary driveway connections and things as well. Part of the cooperative agreement with the DOT called for concrete paving on the street itself. Anything else? We can come back to it if there is. So the Libertyville Road intersection, so this was the other big part of the project or the study up to date, of essentially what, what we're, what do we want to do with this intersection? So you don't necessarily need to read any of this, I'm going to kind of explain it. I just want you to understand that we haven't recommended a roundabout or excluded a signal on a whim. I mean, we've got a traffic study that's, what, 300 pages or something with the data that went into it, and we could certainly provide that. Melanie has a copy of it, the DOT has a copy of it, they're looking at right now. First thing we did was we went out and counted the traffic, so that's kind of what's showing up there. How many cars go through there today? So to give you an idea, PM peak hour, which this is, so generally, that's in the 5:00 range in the evening. You know, there were 257 cars that went southbound through that intersection and 2:33 that went north, and that's going straight. And then all those other movements, again, the individual numbers aren't important, I just wanted to give you the idea that there's some data behind all this. The next piece of that is actually what we project. So the east side of the Libertyville Road intersection has a proposed development there. I think their plans are, they're not firm, I don't know that they have a user, but they have ground, they want to develop. In fact, in that picture, there's a couple houses there that are no longer there. So there's an eight-acre parcel there that they intend that to be commercial development. We met with that property owner along with city staff and talked to them about their plans and the proposal that we have up here in a few minutes, and how it impacts them and just how that would all work. So we accounted for that essentially in the traffic study to make the intersection recommendation. So we went from a total of nine cars in peak hour leaving, or headed westbound, to now I think we have, I have to add it up, 130 or 140. Assuming that develops, that helps generate the traffic that makes you need this, this traffic control at that intersection. So the other goals with that traffic control, part of the project is to change the speed limit likely on this corridor. Now, it's a highway that comes into town and it slows down, and I think this project will change the characteristics of that. It'll, it'll feel more like an urban roadway. It's going to be urbanized, it's going to have curb. And so we want to slow the traffic down, too. So some sort of control at that intersection helps to do that. So that's another reason that we wanted to do it. So again, this isn't super important, this is kind of technical stuff, but we also modeled, we modeled the traffic signal, we modeled the existing condition, we modeled a roundabout. There's something called level of service in the traffic engineering world, that's essentially how well does it operate? A is good, F is bad, D and E are acceptable in like urban areas in peak hour. So the two-way stop control with that development included, that's out there today, operates at a level of service E. It's not very good. There's a big delay trying to get onto the highway from the side roads because the highway traffic takes over, because there's no stop for them. Traffic signal's level of service B. Level of service B is really good. There's no issue with that. Roundabout was level of service A, so a little better. So A and B are both good, A's better. So this is the roundabout concept itself. So there's some lines in the background about right-of-way and where it exists and how much we need and grading limits and some of those things that are still shaken out. The physical location of this may shift a little as we finalize the design and what the exact turning radius in some of this needs to be, but we think it'll be pretty close to this. We've actually, kind of, if you can tell, we've moved it south a little bit. That's to avoid some of the properties to the north. You know, there's a Casey's right there that's fairly new. We've shifted it west just a little bit as well. That's to help keep it away from the east side where there's probably some property available on the southwest corner there. Obviously, all to be purchased, but, you know, I should back up a minute, too. Talk about the traffic signal and level of service. The traffic signal itself, there's a guidance document put out by Federal Highway Administration, Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's, it's basically what all traffic engineering is based on, from construction, control, all the signs you see out during construction, it's all based on this one manual. And then it has warrants for traffic signals. So it says, if you want to put a traffic signal up, you need to meet one of these criteria. And this intersection actually did not meet it for a traffic signal. So we looked at eight-hour volumes, four-hour volumes, and it didn't meet any of those criteria. It was close, but it didn't quite do it. That doesn't mean you can't put one in, you still could, but it, it means we wouldn't recommend it. So that's another reason that we think this is the best solution. Something else with this graphic I should probably mention, there's a road that extends east, Libertyville Road there. We would likely terminate that after South Junction Road is connected. The rest of that would be dependent on some future development. Maybe it's a city project, maybe it's not. It's not included, though, with the main scope of this project. Showing it here because we use this graphic to help talk to that property owner. So I don't, I don't want to confuse and think we're, we're going over there because we're, we're not currently, that's not currently the plan, but, you know, the roundabout itself, it's single lane, which is, as far as roundabouts go, the simplest. The volumes that this roundabout can handle for traffic per day are upwards of 18,000 vehicles a day on the main line. Here, there were six. So there's room for the traffic to grow. We've actually projected out 20 years with the development on the east side, as well as just background traffic growth, overall traffic growth in the area, how much traffic would be here, and the numbers are still well under what a capacity for something like this would be. So it should be an improvement that can withstand the test of time from a capacity and level of service standpoint. That level of service I mentioned on the roundabout was still an A level of service in the 2040 time range in that projection. Some of the things that are shown on here that aren't, finally, you know, we're showing some green areas there that's likely grass or some kind of raised median to help direct the traffic in and out of the roundabout. There's all sorts of things you can do there. It could be aesthetic treatments, pavers, grass is the cheapest. It could be concrete if you don't want to maintain the turf. The red there is actually a truck apron. So if you can imagine some sort of semi or big truck goes through there, the trailer's going to off-track onto that, and there's usually like a four-inch sloped curb. So we want to keep the passenger cars off of it, but the trucks can utilize it.
Are you familiar with the roundabout on the Tumble?
Yep.
So it's going to look similar to that.
So we have some experience with the Tumble, I think you can probably answer the question better than me.
With the truck apron and that kind of thing.
Yep. What was next? So the design vehicle, we are planning to design this so that full-length over-the-road semis can come through here, and they would utilize that truck apron. One of the things the DOT looks at when they design roundabouts on state highways is can you get windmill blades through them? That is not going to be considered here because they can't make it through downtown. So that was a discussion with District 5 and the DOT, and they, they were in agreement with that, so.
What about farm equipment?
Farm equipment's a good question. So I think it depends on the type. We've built some of these in areas like this where there is issues with farm equipment, for example, like a combine. Can I take my combine through here with the head still on it? Or I've got a big grain wagon. So all those things we can look at. Really, the issue with something like that is near a sign, because if it's too, a lot of that farm equipment can hang over the edge. If there's a sign there, they'd hit it, right? So we'll look at that, about where those sign placements are. Go ahead.
Can you talk about the pedestrian crossings?
Yep.
It's, most of the roundabouts that I'm familiar with are not necessarily in pedestrian areas, so how does, how's the interface work between traffic and pedestrians?
Yeah, sure, I can get to that. Come back to the farm equipment piece quickly. The roundabout itself, the operating circle in there is 20 feet wide, so it's pretty wide. It's wider than a typical lane because of all the turning movements that go on. The lanes as you enter are wider, they've got curb on both sides, so they've got to be wide enough to get snowplows in there. Some of those DOT plows are, are large. So as long as we keep the signs back enough, we should be okay. So talk about the pedestrians. Out there today, there's a flashing beacon where the loop trail crosses, right? Flashes all the time. Part of the conversation we had with the Trails Council was, you know, should we put one of those back or some other control? And what we suggested to them was maybe, maybe you don't do that right-of-way. Big difference with the roundabout and different intersection, and I've actually got that in a minute here. This is a pedestrian conflict chart. So the left-hand side is typical intersection, and it basically shows how many conflicts, potential conflicts with the pedestrian there are. So in a four-way intersection like this, that pedestrian has four different locations a vehicle can come from that crosses their path. Somebody entering or somebody exiting that intersection, and they could be coming from any of the three legs. So they've got four conflict points. Now, we're all used to that, you know, we understand that, especially at a stop condition. With a roundabout, you really only have one at a time, so you cross one leg at a time, so you only have to worry about the vehicle that's entering or the vehicle that's exiting, and there's a refuge in the middle, that median or that island is a place that they can stay. And so when we talked with the Trails Council about how big that should be, there's some minimums that you need to meet. I think it's, I can't remember if it's six or eight feet, just to be considered a refuge. They suggested, and I think I agree, it should be at least long enough to get a bike with like a trailer behind it that might have kids or something in it and have a little bit of comfort zone. So maybe that's 10, maybe that's 12. I'm not sure where that will end up exactly. We plan to have more conversations with them about that, as I mentioned, but the big difference with pedestrians with, compared to a regular intersection, is you cross one leg at a time, and you have the opportunity to stop in between and make sure it's safe to cross. The other thing, like, if you look at the south leg, for example, where that crosswalk is shown, it's pulled back a little bit. So from a vehicular standpoint, as you approach that roundabout, you're supposed to yield to the person in the crosswalk. That's state law, yield to a pedestrian in a crosswalk. But there's a, there's a space there. After that crosswalk, there's a full car length before you actually enter the roundabout. So the idea there is that the vehicle doesn't have to make all those decisions at once. They can make one decision at a time. Now, obviously, those things happen very quickly as you enter a roundabout at speed, you know, 20 miles an hour or something, but if you think about a two-way stop like it is today, the person pulling off the side street, they're trying to make sure they're the person pulling off the side street, they're trying to make sure they're clear from their left, their right, and then they've got also two crosswalks to watch. So the idea is that the decisions are gapped a little bit, and that's kind of the safety benefit for pedestrians there. On safety overall, nationally roundabouts have been shown to eliminate crashes, specifically injury crashes. So if you can imagine an issue with this intersection today, there's a car that might be driving 50, 55 miles an hour on Highway 1, and somebody pulls off in the side street, it's a pretty serious accident, so you can't traverse this that quickly. So that's why the injury accidents typically decrease a lot. There's some getting used to it, I don't, I wouldn't suggest that there's not, although there are some in the area, you mentioned at Tamwa and others, but.
How about total number of accidents? Is it the same or less?
So the statistics from Federal Highway Administration are 76% reduction in injury crashes, and I believe it's 72 in total crashes, but I could be wrong on that, that exact number, but yeah.
It's less.
It's a decrease, exactly, yeah.
Substantial decrease.
Substantial, yep. Let's see, what was next? Oh, I skipped over this. So this is vehicular conflict points. This is just roundabout versus other intersection. For the roundabout, you only really have a conflict when you enter and exit. And in a typical four-way intersection, you have all those other movements that could potentially be occurring at the same time, so that's just a kind of a traffic engineering graphic there. So what do you do with an emergency vehicle? You know, there's a hospital right here. So he's going to play a video, this was actually produced by the Minnesota DOT, about what to do in an emergency vehicle, if it comes up on you in the roundabout. So what you need to do is you need to clear the intersection, so that's really no different than any other intersection. You know, we pull over, we stop when an emergency vehicle comes, we would never do that in the middle of the road, in the middle of the intersection, because we don't know where that emergency vehicle's headed. So we, if we're in the intersection already, we'd continue through it, stop. So it's the same thing. The idea is, again, if you're inside that circle, you need to exit the roundabout, because if you stop in that roundabout, the next person stops behind you and can potentially block the exit of the emergency vehicle.
So it's common sense, but is there any signage that's ever used to help people understand?
So I think part of what we've.
What to do in case of emergency vehicle.
Part of what we've talked with staff about is, before this opens, there should be likely some sort of public education that's done. It could be through, you know, city gatherings like this, it could be through the schools, it could be through the college, I mean, something we can do, reach out to the community, Facebook or others, and talk about some of these things. What do you do in this case? How do you traverse the roundabout? What do pedestrians do? What about emergency vehicles? All those things should come sometime between now and 2022 when this opens, so I think, I wouldn't suggest to open it without that type of communication, I guess, so. So lastly, I've got two videos here. Not quite last, there's one more thing after this, but this kind of shows you what the corridor would look like. So this is an attempt to be real to your location. That's Casey's there on the left, this is a video that's going to kind of fly down the corridor. The thing that's not real here is the traffic volume isn't actually real, we put some cars in. But you can see on the right-hand side or the east, power poles, that green space on the right is bigger, the trail is on the right, so that's wider, 41-foot street. And so this is an example of just a graphic, we're trying to make sure people can understand what we're talking about here. The roundabout public education, something like this could be done as well.
Are you guys planning to maintain the Casey's entrance that's on Highway 1?
In short, yes. There's been some discussion about should that be a right-in, right-out, or should you really be able to make a left into there? Because if you're making a left turn into there, that means you're northbound, potentially traffic could back up behind you. But I believe it'll be maintained, and I believe that the commercial property that's across the street, should they request an access to Highway 1, it'll be directly across from it. It's kind of the conversation we had.
Are there any videos that show how traffic should behave in the presence of an emergency vehicle that we could put on the city's website?
There are. I don't, I thought we had one, but.
Just available, and we could start putting this up on the website whenever we need.
Sure. So this is the same thing going the other direction. So baseball's on the right there.
Yeah.
See the, essentially the corridor. There's a lot of things in here about what are the temporary impacts during construction that aren't shown. You know, this is final, final day type things, but this is kind of where we're at today. So my hope is that gives you something that you can visualize better than everything I showed previously. But, you know, again, we could help some of the education standpoint with things like this, so. This is the roundabout again, so you mentioned the Casey's Drive, you can see that on the, my pointer won't work on that screen, but you can see that on the north there, that we stopped that splitter island on the north side of the roundabout prior to that, so you could still make a left turn in there. It's, it's a decent ways away, being on the, as far north on their property as it could be. You know, could it be farther from a traffic engineering standpoint? Yes, it always could. Similarly with the South Junction Road, how does that work? You know, can you still get in and out of there? In this case, you could get around that median and get out without a connection of Libertyville Road farther east somewhere. I think that leg there still has some work to be done about how that'll really look, as most of this, you know, this is concept, even if you, we're probably maybe, you know, 25 or 30% of the way through an actual design that's buildable by a contractor, but this is where we really start making decisions about how to move forward, so. So lastly, this is the whole corridor. The only thing I really want to point out with this, I've got this same map in the back that we could actually stand around and look at with you guys or anyone else when we're done and talk more about specifics. But I did want to show the storm sewer exit, so the storm sewer, the plan is the whole corridor would get collected and exit through here. So that's a piece we hadn't mentioned, that's mostly city property through there with the baseball fields and the dog park. Would be some interruption there. Today, the storm sewer has, there is some storm sewer out there. We don't really know where all of it is. We know where the outlets are, we know where the intakes on the road are, we're not exactly sure how the two connect, there's not good records on it. We've opened all the manholes and things along the road, we've found the outlets. The big point with those existing storm sewers is there's no easements that run through those properties from the road to the west. So unless we want to go acquire easements, the easiest thing to do is take it through something that the city already owns. We weren't sure if we could make that work from an elevation standpoint, but we've looked at it pretty hard and we think we can make it happen, so that's the current plan. That would avoid running through one of those properties on that side. We can't really take the water east because that really changes the drainage basin that that water's in, so everybody downstream then is affected differently based on that, That is all that I had. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I've got some maps in the back, I've got the typical sections that I showed that had all the dimensions on it, I've got hard copies of that in the back as well, otherwise I'd entertain anything.
Counsel, any questions? If not, we're going to do this as a public hearing, so we'll open it to the public, but first, any questions here? Okay, yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Ronald Vader Royal, and I'm very happy about the plan and actually very impressed with the roundabout, very well presented. My only concern is, I walked this section recently to look at the interface between the trail system, and I didn't even know that they were planning to have this incorporated, an extension of the trail. To me, it would make more sense in keeping with the nature of our trail system to have it on the other side of the road. If you look at the B Street trail, which is well-used, that's on a, it does not actually serve the houses, it serves the, like the reservoir, and it gives a more park-like setting for a trail system. On the other side of the road, we have more larger properties, less commercial usage. I'm not sure that these commercial properties, maybe in 100 years when people are bicycling everywhere in Fairfield, the weather warms up, people will actually be bicycling between these commercial settings. But I see it more as connecting the two parks. There's a park near the dog park and the Obie Nelson Park, that could be extended into the trail system. It would make more sense, I think, to the city to keep the trail system on one side of the road, all the way down through the hospital, and maybe even in the future extend it out underneath the highway to the other side. So that would just be my only public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Melanie, did the Trails Council originally have it planned? Because this is a, this is something they've had planned four or five years, was it planned for the west side?
Jason, can you put a picture up just so we have a visual as we talk about it? Just with the roundabout showing?
Thank you.
Can you back up to that?
We're here, Wendy.
Yeah.
Yes, so the original application, well, the original application was to pave the shoulders, and then as we moved through this project, it was on the west side. The agave land was open at that time, and the pool was still there when we first started with this concept. And so we actually went back and forth several times, even in our meeting with the Trails Council. Well, this site has more commercial, this site has more residential, this one has less drives, this one has more drives. Went back and forth, and so really the recommendation is based on the right-of-way needs. If we would put the trail on the west side, we would be needing more right-of-way from the west side property owners than we would the east. About five feet difference?
Correct.
Roughly, so we would need 12 on the, if we went, put the trail on the west side, we'd need 12 from one side and two from the other, and so that's where the decision came in.
Shift the money, shift the acquisition.
Yeah, we'd shift the acquisition, I mean, it would still be the same.
Total.
Total feet that we would need, but one side would be more impacted than the other.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other question? Yeah, go ahead.
Back up here quickly. This is an OK spot for it, I guess. There is going to be a sidewalk on the other side as well.
Yes.
So today, there's no pedestrian improvements at all, so I guess I fully understand the point, but there will be pedestrian improvements on both sides.
I think that's a good point, Ron, because the intention of the Trails Council, to put it on the west also was for, for safety and to move from Obie Nelson to the trail system as well, so that's not being eliminated, it's just not going to be as wide. I think it's a real luxury to have it on both sides, really.
It's a five-foot sidewalk, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
So it's 10 and 5.
Yeah.
Were you saying that if you put the trail on the other side, the sidewalk would be eliminated?
In theory, you could flip this and shift the road east, put the trail on the west. Part of the problem with that is the storm sewer, we've got to build that storm sewer first. So if we, whatever side we tear up first, the storm sewer needs to go there. Typically, that's on the side of the road the storm sewer's going to outlet on, because that's the easiest thing, you bring it up to the road, you come down the sides of the road, and they can put all that in. If we flip that to the other side, we still need to outlet the storm sewer to the west, that's where the water goes, which means we've got to bring a lot bigger pipe across the road, and with construction sequencing, that's kind of hard to do. So in theory, though, you could flip this over and do it the other way. It's harder from a constructability standpoint, though.
And right now, there's nothing down there on either side, right?
Correct, yeah, there, there's no, back up to the picture that I had.
People walk on the shoulders.
Yeah, they walk right out there on the road.
Yeah, there's, there's no sidewalk or anything there.
One way back here, sorry?
Go back to the beginning.
There. That's basically what it looks like today.
So it's still an improvement.
Yeah, we talked with the Trails Council about the benefit for the west side, for example, is people trying to get to the hospital, there's a winter walking program there, the ball fields are there. Ultimately, we went to the other side for the right-of-way, the constructability, and the potential that some of those commercial businesses over there generate some pedestrian traffic, especially from the community, I'm not sure the name of it, there's a senior community there on the.
South Gate.
South Gate, that's right.
Thank you. When you get down to the park, are you going to have an ADA accessible crosswalk there?
Yeah, so there's, crosswalk improvements would be at Libertyville Road and at Fillmore Avenue, so separately from this, I don't want to put words in Melanie's mouth, but there's some crosswalk discussions about how to make that crosswalk at Fillmore safer during school.
Any other comments from the public? Any property owners? Okay. Counsel, are we prepared for next step? So does this sound like the kind of recommendation you would make to the DOT as a final presentation of the project?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Any, any other points, gentlemen? No? Okay. Thank you for your presentation. If there isn't any other business, we'll call entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by two-hill.
Second.
Second by Gandy, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Then you adjourn.